Father, we thank you this evening for loving us, for your mercy and care. We ask, Lord, that the things we do this evening, we would be doing so in your name, and that we would do so with wisdom and guidance and direction from you, that we make the best decisions possible for education in Stanley County. Lord, there are great many issues and concerns, and we lift them all up to you at this point, asking again for that wisdom and guidance to make the right decisions. We pray these things in your name. Amen. May we stand for the pledge, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time I'll move that the board enter into closed session. Pursue it to North Carolina General Statute 143-139.11A3 to consult with an attorney employed by the board in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body to discuss and receive advice regarding JK versus Stanley County Board of Education, 20-EDC-05153, and for personnel matters, pursue it to the appropriate North Carolina General Statute. Entertain a motion. Motion by Ms. Watson. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Sorenson. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. Board will enter into closed session. All right, I'll call us back into open session. Next item on the agenda are recognitions. Dr. Dennis.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chance. Hold on one second. I've got two recognitions I would like to put forth to the board. The first recognition is National School Counselor Mott, and I would just like to recognize the school counselors and the wonderful job they have done. Our representative today is Ms. Beverly Pennington, of course. She is in charge of Student Services, which encompasses counselors, and I think she has a few words she would like to say.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, board, for allowing me to address you this evening. Research, school data, and observations tell us that schools and students are more successful with the great support and comprehensive services provided by school counselors. Stanley County Schools is very fortunate to have some of the best counselors in the state of North Carolina. We would like to recognize them during this week of school counselor appreciation. Our school counselors provide student learning and support, growth, in a variety of ways. And during COVID, their work was essential in addressing both social, emotional, and also physical needs of students, and this has been critical. Our counselors are joining us by YouTube this evening, so I now ask you to join me in recognizing our school counselors during this week of February 1st through the 5th as we celebrate them in National School Counselors Week.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
The one other person I would like to recognize is Ms. Lori Bell. Ms. Lori Bell is a math teacher, I believe, the eighth grade math teacher at West Stanley Middle School, and she was accepted to what's called the Seeds Fellowship through the Borough's Welcome Fund, and I would just like to read an excerpt of what that entails. It's a year-long professional learning opportunity that strives to help STEM educators across North Carolina develop culturally appropriate instructional strategies as well as implement equitable practices into the classroom. To accomplish this goal, the program gives educators a safe space to collaborate and reflect on issues such as anti-racist teaching, culturally relevant pedagogy, and equitable learning strategy, et cetera. Only 20 teachers from across the state were actually asked or selected to participate in this program, and our Ms. Lori Bell was one of those teachers, so I'd like to congratulate her.
Outstanding. Next agenda item are the consent agendas or agenda for the January 5th board meeting. Are there any corrections to be made? Hearing none, it will stand approved as presented. Next is our 2019-2020 audit report, and I believe Mr. Andy Deal from our auditing firm is here, too, had to make that report.
Hope everyone is doing well this evening. My name is Andy Deal. I'm a partner with the accounting firm Anderson Smith &amp; White, and we're the auditors for Stanley County Schools. I'm here to present the audited financial statements for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2020. I'm just going to give a summary of the financial statements, kind of hit the important stuff. If anybody has any questions, please feel free to stop me at any time. We'll start on page one. On page one, we have our first auditor's reports. There are four auditor's reports in these financial statements. This first one here is on whether the financial statements are in accordance with GAAP or generally accepted accounting principles. This first audit report is what we call an unmodified report. You could also call that a clean report. The reason why it's called an unmodified report is we didn't note anything during our audit that would cause us to modify our audit report, so that's why it's referred to as an unmodified audit report, or you could also call it a clean report. And an unmodified report, you know, that's as clean as it gets. That's the highest level of assurance we can issue on a set of financial statements. So we're pleased to report that it is an unmodified report. Next, if you flip on over to page 14. On page 14 here, we have a very important statement for a school district. This is your balance sheet for all your governmental funds, so this is going to be all the funds at the school district except for school nutrition. School nutrition has different accounting rules, so their financial statements are shown at a different part of these financial statements, are shown in a different section. Your balance sheet is going to give you a snapshot of the financial condition of the board as of June 30th, 2020. It's going to show you what your cash balance is as of June 30th. It's going to show you what your account's payable balance is. If you flip to the very next page, page 15, we have the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for the governmental funds. You could also call this a profit and loss, a P&amp;L, or an income statement. It's going to give you the revenues and expenses of all the governmental funds, which, like I said, is every fund except for the child nutrition fund. Just a couple numbers I want to highlight on page 15 here. If you look at the first column, that's your general fund. The net change in fund balance for the year, the third number from the bottom, we had an increase in fund balance of about $200,000 for the general fund. If you look at the last number on the general fund, the ending fund balance is $685,000. For a district this size, just to be honest with you, that number is definitely a little low. You know, you need that general fund fund balance to kind of get you through any kind of tough times. If there's any cuts at the federal level, at the state level, you know, you're going to need that fund balance to kind of withstand that blow. You know, given everything that's happened with the pandemic, you know, it wouldn't shock us to see, you know, cuts at the state level, the federal level, the county level, just due to closing the economy. There's going to be a decrease in tax revenues, and like I said, it wouldn't surprise me one bit to see, you know, cuts. You know, maybe not this year with all the stimulus money, but once the stimulus money runs out, it wouldn't shock us to see cuts. And, you know, we've got ending fund balance of $685,000. If you look at the second column, the State Public School Fund, you've got total revenues of about $58 million. So if that number's cut 5% in the $58 million, that's $2.9 million they're going to cut you. So if they cut you $2.9 million, you've got fund balance of 685,000, you know, you are going to have some tough decisions to make. So that's why we always say, you know, get that fund balance built up as high as you can, and, you know, our advice would be to, you know, use these stimulus funds in the best way possible, and hopefully we can build that fund balance just in case there is, you know, cuts in the future. The next page I want to go over is page 23. On page 23, we have the statement of cash flows for the School Food Service Fund, or I call it the Child Nutrition Fund. Due to governmental accounting rules, the child nutrition fund, they have to record in their fund financial statements all the pension and OPEB liabilities, and just being honest with you, it really muddies the water on just trying to say, okay, is this program doing well financially or is it not? And, you know, one thing we look at, you know, given those liabilities and how muddy it makes the water, is we look at, you know, does the program generate cash? You know, is it making cash? Is it bleeding cash? Another indicator is, is it paying all its indirect costs? Is it paying all the overhead for the central office services, like to process all their payroll? Is it paying all of its indirect cost, you know, that the state says it can pay? And just so you know, your cash balance has to be at a certain point before the child nutrition fund can pay indirect costs. So if you look at page 23 here, we've got the statement of cash flows, just like it sounds, this is going to kind of detail out the change in cash for the fiscal year. If you look at the third number from the bottom, we had a net decrease in cash of $136,000 for the year. That's not a great sign. The only thing I'll add to it is, you know, last year, especially in June, it was very unique times with the pandemic. There was a lot of COVID-related feeding initiatives, and although it's showing a decrease in cash, the amount you had due from the USDA due to all these COVID feeding initiatives, it went up about 200 grand. So if your accounts receivable from the USDA didn't increase so much, you know, your cash wouldn't have decreased so much. So another way you could look at it is that it really increased 70 grand, assuming the USDA receivable would have been constant. But, you know, long story short, just with all the COVID-related feeding initiatives in June, you know, as of June 30th, you were, the district was due a lot more from the USDA than normal years just due to all the COVID-related feeding initiatives. So like I said, if you look at the ending cash balance on page 23, the ending cash for the child nutrition program is $926,000. Being honest, it would be good to see that number higher, but just compared to districts across the state, I don't think it's anything to be alarmed about. You definitely want to monitor this number, because what happens is, if a child nutrition program loses so much cash, the general fund basically has to bail it out. And, you know, we don't see that a lot. You hate to see that, but you definitely just want to keep an eye on that cash number just to make sure that the general fund's not going to have to pick up the slack before it's too late. So that's just one thing we always do to just, to assess the health of a child nutrition program, is to look at that change in cash. And I think last year, I think we had about a $200,000, $300,000 increase in cash in the program, so last year was a good year. This year, not so good, but we did have the COVID stuff. But again, just, you know, all in all, compared to other districts, you know, you're not in bad shape, but you're not in great shape. I would say it's about average. And, you know, I will say, we're seeing more and more child nutrition programs really struggle to stand on their own and really struggle to make cash. So it is, you know, a lot of districts are having trouble, basically, with the child nutrition program making cash and standing on its own and not needing the general fund to bail it out, so to speak. So, you know, you guys aren't in dire straits yet, but definitely something you want to keep in mind, just because you want to, you know, nip it in the bud before it's a problem, not after it's a problem. The next thing I want to talk about is on page 65. This is where the compliance part of the audit is presented, and I've got my page number wrong. Page 62, sorry about that. On page 62, this is where the compliance part of the audit starts. You know, due to all the federal and state grants, there's a ton of compliance requirements that go along with those grants. There are three audit reports in the compliance section. This first one here is on internal control over compliance and internal control over financial reporting, and this is an unmodified report, which is a clean report, so, you know, good news there. We have no findings as far as the internal control over compliance goes. If you flip over two more pages, page 64, this is our report on the district's compliance with all the major federal programs. So any, like, your major federal programs, Title I, child nutrition, the EC program, special education, this is where we test the compliance with your federal programs. And again, this is an unmodified report, which means we didn't note anything that would cause us to modify our audit report. If you flip over to the next page, page 66, this is our report on the district's compliance with state programs, with major state programs. And although we did have a finding here, the overall audit report is still unmodified because the finding wasn't so great that it would cause us to modify our audit report. We'll go over the audit finding later, or next, but, you know, still overall, it's an unmodified report, which is a clean report. However, we did have one audit finding related to state funding. And then next, we'll go over the audit finding, which is presented on page 71. So on 71 here, we have our schedule of findings and questioned cost. During our audit, we did have one finding. We noted three teachers that were teaching in subjects that they were not certified or licensed to teach. So we did notice, you know, three teachers who were teaching in areas that they didn't have certification to teach, so obviously that is a finding. But, you know, the good news is, is that is our only finding, and, you know, just from our follow-up work after the finding, I think the district is going to put forth a pretty good effort just to make sure everybody is teaching in an area they are certified in, and then when we come out to do the next audit, we are required to follow up on these findings to make sure that they have indeed been corrected. So, you know, during our next audit, you know, we'll do testing to make sure it has The last thing I want to go over is just our required communications letter here. And this letter is exactly like it sounds. Due to auditing standards, there are certain communications that we are required to have with you, the board. The last paragraph on this first page is all I want to go over. It's titled "Difficulties Encountered in Performing the Audit." When we do an audit, you know, we ask a ton of questions. We ask for a ton of documentation. If we have any difficulties in getting our audit done, we are required to report those difficulties to you. So, you know, I always like to go over this with the board, whether we have difficulties or not. When we completed our audit this year, we had no difficulties in completing the audit. If we asked a question, you know, we got a complete answer. We got it timely. If we asked for documentation, we got it timely. And, you know, given everything that's happened at, you know, this school district, you know, everything with the pandemic, you know, the audit was done on time, so just, you know, our hat's off to the finance department and every department here at the school district, because, you know, it doesn't just hit finance. It's, you know, it hits pretty much every department, our audit, and, you know, we're pleased to report we didn't have any difficulties in getting the audit done. So I always want to mention that, like I said, if it's good or bad there. So, but that's all I have to go over tonight. If anybody has any specific questions, we'd love to get them answered.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson.
Thank you, guys.
Next agenda item this evening is the Vision Services Contract. Dr. Dennis.
Yes, sir. Like some of our services for our exceptional children's program, we have to often contract paraprofessionals. In this case, we are contracting with a company called Equalized Vision Services, and this is to provide vision services to our students who are visually impaired and require services on their ID. I don't have a definitive number for what this contract would be, because it's charged by an hour, depends on how much work they were doing. Some preliminary investigation leads us to believe that it may be over $50,000. So since there is the possibility, the contract could exceed $50,000 by policy, I need to bring it to the board for approval. So my recommendation is to approve as presented.
Chair will entertain a motion based on Dr. Dennis's comments, inserting the Vision Motion by Ms. Watson to accept. I have a second. Second by Mr. Sorenson. Are there any discussion, questions, concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, our committee reports, instructional program. Ms. Gibson, do you have anything?
No, I do not.
Thank you. Facilities, Mr. Graves.
No report.
Finance, Mr. Sorenson. No report. Personnel, Ms. Watson.
No report.
I will see Ms. Poplin. I know you have some comments.
Yeah, I do. We met on January 21st, and we had 20 policies that had recommended or required changes that needed to be made. All those policies are in your packets for read-only. We did pull one policy, policy number 4150, for further discussion. And does anyone have any questions about any of the policies that were in your packet?
Hearing none, these policies will be tabled for 30 days and will be brought back to the board at the next meeting in March for approval. Legislative resource, Dr. Dennis.
I have no report.
Recomend instruction, Dr. Amy Blake-Lewis.
Good evening. At the last meeting, there was a request for information concerning our unit recovery and credit recovery process, and the board had some specific questions as to numbers, and so I do have that information for you this evening. It should have been prepared for you at your seat this evening, so I'm just going to start with the first document, which breaks down the remote versus face-to-face students. So that document, across the top, you'll see 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade, and the number of courses failed, broken down by F2F, which means face-to-face, and REM, which means remote. And then you can see that same information broken down at the middle school level for 6th, 7th, and 8th. If you look at the grand totals to the right side, percentage-wise, it came out very evenly. The total, or the percentage of face-to-face students or face-to-face courses failed made up 47.3% of the total, and the total courses failed by remote students made up 52.7%. So not necessarily a large discrepancy between students who were not successful face-to-face versus those who were fully remote. The next document just breaks down a little bit more for you. This was looking at the data one step prior. When we looked at the possible or the potential failures going into quarter two, which would have been towards mid-October, you can see the numbers in that column that's labeled Q2, and then that number does drop under the column that's labeled F1, which means by the end of the semester, we had decreased the number of potential high school failures by 765 courses, and we had decreased the number of middle school failures by 682, which means that that unit recovery process was definitely working for students because it significantly decreased that number of failed courses that we reported. The next document reflects a specific question from the board. You wanted to know the number of students who failed either 1, 2, 3, or perhaps all four of their core classes, and so this document breaks it down for you by that, also by school. So the top half of the document is by high school, and the bottom half of that document is by middle school. And then the final document that you have was also in response to a particular question. You wanted to know the number of students and percentage of students who were offered the unit recovery versus the number that completed it versus the number that successfully regained the credit, and so this final document outlines those numbers for you. And that, again, is broken down by high school and middle school.
I could just make a comment. Thank you, Dr. Blake-Lewis. Of course, most districts, if not all districts in the state, are kind of in the same boat we are with these failures. Her team has done a good job of mitigating a lot of the failures. This is just a truncated version of more data that you will get at the retreat, so we had asked some specific questions in open session, so we decided to go ahead and address those now. But again, you will get more information at the retreat as far as data into failures and, you know, proficiencies and things like that.
Yes. Thank you.
Are there other questions of Dr. Blake-Lewis? Anyone? Okay. Thank you. Personnel administration, Division of Services, Ms. Calver.
Good evening. I'd like to draw your attention to the board agenda, the personnel agenda. Updates have been made and read. Section 1 requires no action, but Section 2 does require action.
Do I have a motion to accept Section 2 of the personnel agenda as presented? Motion by Mr. Sorenson. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Watson. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Calver. Okay. Auxiliary Services, Mr. Dudding.
I have nothing to present unless you have any questions concerning the audit that you would like to address with me.
I do, but not at this time. We have no one signed up for public comments this evening, so Superintendent Comments, Dr. Dennis.
Governor Cooper had a message. If you do not get it back via email, I gave you a hard copy, that you could read that at another time, but I will address some pending legislation and, of course, some of the comments made by the governor and his cabinet today. Currently, there's a Senate Bill 37, which is called "In-Person Learning Choices for Families." This bill today was sent through the Senate Educational Committee, and essentially what it says is, if the bill were to pass, that all school districts would have to have an option of in-person learning for K through 12. That could be either on the Plan A or the Plan B schedule. There would still be There would still be virtual choices for students. And the school systems would follow the strong schools in North Carolina public health toolkit when implementing. But it would, you know, as far as we go as a school district, we have a leg up on a lot of other school districts in that we already meet most of these statutes anyway. So we would have to do very little work, if any, if were they to pass this. Having said that, there are other school districts. I think today, the governor's office said that 90 out of 115 school districts do have some sort, you know, some version of face-to-face learning, but the other school districts do not. And if this were to go through, those school districts would have 15 days after approval to accommodate all the different sections of the bill. But during his message, I will say one thing before I move on. During his message today, he did want school systems to embrace learning for K-5 to five days a week. And he would like to see that as well, is move forward with the 6th through 12, the secondary, with more face-to-face options. And again, a lot of that's going to, you know, be predicated upon what the toolkit says. At that time, it does have several revisions. There was a revision that was sent forward today to help with some of the bringing more kids into the schools. And we'll also say that, you know, as far as everything, well, I think we're just in really good shape moving forward, no matter what they end up doing. But there is definitely a push to bring students back in schools across the state. As far as a COVID update, looking at our COVID numbers, they were trending well. We did have a bump yesterday with staff to where the staff bumped up, but they'd come down again today. And we've been on a little bit of decline since we come back from the two weeks virtual back to the face-to-face learning. So our staff numbers look pretty good. We are seeing some increases in our student numbers. But again, those numbers do not seem to be coming from within the school. These seem to be community spread and coming from, you know, outside the school. Plus, now that the students are coming back to school, we're getting better data on who actually needs to be quarantined or who has contracted COVID-19. I would like to mention to the board, this is this is Black History Month, which is the annual celebration of achievements by African-Americans and recognizing their central role in U.S. history. And February 1st to the 5th of the week is National Counseling Week. We just highlighted that. But it also is Pride and Food Service Week. The onset of the pandemic has changed the way our facilities operate. And I want to say that our food service team members have served our children without waiver and have done an excellent job. And oftentimes, especially toward the end of December, we're stressed by some of their colleagues having to be out for COVID protocol. But they always persevered and done an outstanding job. The week of February 8th to the 12th is Love the Bus and Bus Driver Appreciation. It highlights an important role of the yellow school bus in our communities and show appreciation for school bus drivers who safely transport more of our children to school every day. And not only do that, but we also task them with serving meals and bringing meals throughout the community. So kind of, you know, they serve a dual role there. And we're just really proud of how they've responded to everything during COVID. February 3rd is World Read Aloud Day. And what this does is cause attention to the importance of sharing stories by challenging participants to grab a book, find an audience, and read aloud. Brings people together through stories more important than ever this year when the shared experience and connection to reading aloud is so needed in our communities. This is a global effort celebrated in over 173 countries and counting. And I would like to say, I know our media specialists have put together what they have done is they went through the district and have people read individual books. And we read it into a video. We have it recorded. And they're going to put it all together and make that an event. I actually read one of my favorite books, The Story of Ferdinand. And I know Ms. Calvert read as well, and other people within Central Office. We tried to participate as well. So what they're going to do is they're going to put all these together and make kind of a gallery so that the kids and families in the community can watch us read some of our books as well. Also, it's Valentine's Day. I know I didn't have to tell you all that, but, you know, just wanted to put that out there, President's Day. And that's all I have today. I know I had quite a bit. Again, I'm not going to read some of the stuff that we put that come from the governor. It's all public domain. Does anyone have any questions? If not, then that's my report. Thank you.
Questions, Superintendent? Board member comments, Mr. Graves. I'm going to start with you this evening.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to congratulate everyone who was recognized tonight. The counselors in the schools, during normal times, it's a tough job. And it goes without saying that all the time and effort that's put in helping the students and teachers and families, everyone in the school system is certainly much appreciated. And don't think it goes unnoticed, because it doesn't. And we all up here probably hear from parents who've had their children assisted by the counselors in the schools. And it makes a huge difference, particularly for people that are struggling right now with work. Having somebody in the schools for students to help students get through some of the tough times is incredibly important. So we appreciate you and we thank you. Also, congratulations to the individual who won the STEM Educator for Equity and Diversity Fellowship. I think it's been a couple of years in a row now that we've been recognizing that. And so that's fantastic for them. I also wanted to thank Dr. Amy Blake-Lewis and her staff that helped compile all the information that we had began discussing last month, and I think even the month before that. I wanted to note a couple of things in addition to what she highlighted. And that was the secondary Q2 and F1 core failures. The first time I heard about this unit recovery process, I think was in our last full board meeting. And so it's fantastic to see the number of students that were helped and took advantage of the unit recovery process and were able to get out of that failing state. So that was pretty remarkable. And I know a lot of people had to work hard to pull that off because I don't think it's something we've had to do before. Is that correct? This is new.
That is correct.
Right. So that's a big deal. I also wanted to note, I know people can't see this necessarily, the data. I don't know if we have it anywhere. But in the high schools, the number of secondary school students who failed 1, 2, 3, or 4 courses in the fall. I don't want to pick on any one particular school here. And I'm assuming all these numbers are accurate. But I just, I did want to point out that Albemarle High School was not, did not rank number one, which in this case, 1 would be bad, in any of those categories, 1, 2, 3, or 4. I know that might shock some people in the community to learn Albemarle High School was not the top underperforming school when it came to grade failures, or course failures, I should say. And then for the middle schools, it was, they also did very well in the middle schools, too. I just thought that, or pointing out. So congratulations to the schools that didn't rank number 1, 2, or 3 in any of those categories. And I'm sure we'll have more information to share with the public as it's compiled. So thank you, guys, for putting this together. It's very interesting information. One of the things that I did want to point out real quick was, well, two things. One was the governor's comments today. And I thought it was remarkable how, if you look at the statistics, the governor, now fortunately, our school system has been, as Superintendent pointed out, ahead of the curve, no pun intended. But we have been ahead of the curve in the fact that we've given the families and the students of Stanley County more options than almost any other county in the state. We led even last year during the initial closure with feeding the students in the county. I mean, the board couldn't take any credit for it. It was everyone in the school system that stepped up and immediately had class plans and had the food ready that was being delivered the very next day that we had shut down. It was absolutely remarkable. I think we continue the track record the school system does of being ahead of the curve in providing students and families with options. We recognize the hardships that many people are placed in. And giving them that flexibility is super important. So it's good that the governor has finally recognized the importance of those things. But I do say that it is interesting, the timing, given the fact that the number of hospitalizations, the infection rates, and all of that data is much higher than it was back at the start of the school year. And they use the excuse that now they know more than they knew back then. Well, some people knew more back then. And unfortunately, I know you always want to err on the side of caution. But certainly, I'm glad that we gave those students that wanted the in-person instruction the option to do that at the beginning of the school year. So a thank you, big thank you to the school system for making that even possible. Because if you hadn't have done that, we wouldn't have had the option to extend to the community. So congratulations and thank you on that. And hopefully, those counties that are struggling to open back up will reach out and get some advice from the staff here. Last but not least, it was really interesting. I thought about Black History Month. I'm glad you brought that up because I haven't really paid attention much to the curriculum stuff. I've been more focused on the finances and things like that. But I would like to take a look at it at some point in time because I remember several years ago, man, I don't know, maybe longer than that, on Facebook, I was viewing some friend's post. And there was a post about a gentleman, African-American, named Eugene Bullard, who, as the stories say, if you research him, probably 1 in a million Americans don't know who that person even is. After reading this incredible article about him and who he was, I forgot who he was. I had to go back and look through my timeline tonight to bring it up earlier today. And I was like, oh, my gosh. And I sort of felt bad, but Eugene Bullard is one of millions of Americans that are incredible Americans. He was born in Georgia because of some racial violence. He was born in 1895. He fled, and he ended up going over to Europe. And he went to France where he was a boxer. He became a fighter pilot. He was the first African-American combat fighter pilot in the world. He happened to do it over in France. He was a soldier. He was injured in the war, in World War II. And he had a bar that he opened up where he became a spy for the French Resistance against the Germans. And then he came home, and he was a business owner over there, obviously. And then he came home and he finished his life before retirement as an elevator operator. But I thought of this, and I remember seeing the mural down in Carthage where there was an American who had gone over a white American over to France. And there's this big mural painted about this guy down there on the wall. And it's a really cool story. And you're proud, hey, here's a person from North Carolina that went over to France. But what people don't know is that Eugene Bullard was actually knighted by France. And when they came to visit, I think it was de Gaulle, when he came to visit, he wanted to go meet him. And people in the White House were scrambling to figure out who this guy was. He was a French hero. And I don't know how many people in France even know who he is now. But back in the '60s, everybody knew who he was. He was a huge deal. So I just wanted to point him out. And there's a lot of interesting information on a website called blackpast.org. And the only reason I bring this up is that we just, this should not have to be information we learn in Black History Month. It should be information that we learn as part of every history class every month of the year that we're in school. So thank you for giving me the extra time there. Chairman Chance for that. Thank you.
Ms. Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Chance. I would like to also congratulate the best drivers. They're very important to us, the food service. I know Ms. Melton has done a great job with that. Our counselor month, we're very proud to have them. That's a big thank you. And Lori Bell, I want to thank her for doing all she does with STEM. Mr. Dudley, thank you for taking care of us. And I want to say, you know, our teachers are working really, really hard. I know it's going to be harder with more students coming back in, but I think that's the best thing for us to do. I think our kids are more safe in school than they are anywhere else. So at that, thank you for everything and have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. Mr. Sorenson.
Start my comments off by quoting George Washington Carver. He said, "Education is the key that unlocks the golden door to freedom. On the simple first, I placed my hand on a Bible and swore an oath. It's the same oath most public servants in North Carolina elected to office take. Much like the oath of enlistment I swore in 1979, I take that oath very, very seriously. Ladies and gentlemen, I have lost sleep over the oath and the tenets it requires that I, actually, we all uphold. The line in particular that troubles me is that I will endeavor to support and maintain and defend the Constitution of North Carolina. When I swore that oath, I was declaring before God Almighty Himself, my intentions to live up to the criteria set forth in the North Carolina Constitution. My conundrum comes from Article 9, Section 1. The General Assembly shall provide taxation and otherwise a general and uniform system of free public schools, which will be maintained at least nine months in a year, and where equal opportunities will be provided to all students. Where my issue lies is in the simple fact that our state is not fulfilling that constitutionally mandated commitment. As a matter of fact, the state of North Carolina has been gradually, methodically, and incrementally reducing the funding to our public schools when adjusted to inflation. It is not a Republican issue or a Democratic issue. The state's issues date back to the 1990s when I started teaching. It boggles my mind that adequately funding our public schools has been distorted into a partisan issue by some. Through accounting shell gains, North Carolina has shifted state sales tax revenues away from public schools. NC lottery proceeds to general budget line items and fail to provide for the capital needs across our state. Wealthy counties, and this is a fact, have simply repeatedly raised local taxes to cover their losses. More rural counties like ours are being left behind. And I'm here to tell you, ladies and gentlemen, our kids in Stanley County deserve the same opportunity that folks in Wake and Orange County get. That's the standard set forth in Article 9, Section 1 and 2. This is unacceptable unless the General Assembly is willing to remove Article 9 from our state constitution. We have to address it, all of us. We are North Carolina. I swore no to uphold our constitution, but frankly, with each passing year, and keep in mind I've been involved since 1992, our schools are tasked with doing more with less funding and resources. This past year has been exceptionally demanding on with the COVID issues piled upon our staff, support folks, and central office. I don't have the words to adequately thank our teachers, administrators, bus drivers, food nutrition people in central office, folks. I don't have the word to tell you how much I appreciate you. I do not cast about the word hero casually, but in my eyes, they are all just that. We have to demand the state to do their duty and better fund our system. We have to. The efforts that our school system employs warrant at least that. Finally, I am fully and personally aware that COVID-19 is a blight on us all and is taking a terrible toll right now in my district. I have an immediate family member in the hospital battling for his life today. I get that. But COVID-19 has not erased the West Ed Leander report, which proves we are failing our schoolchildren. COVID-19 has not magically deleted the 8 billion in capital needs across the state identified by West Ed. Therefore, I am imploring everyone, everyone that believes in upholding the Constitution of our state to contact our state representative and senator. Tell them it's time to do our constitutional duty and address funding shortfalls that are hurting our children. Let's strive to provide every student the golden key that George Washington Carver mentioned.
Well spoken, Mr. Sorenson. Well spoken. Ms. Gibson, do you have any comments this evening? We understand. Right ahead. You're right ahead.
Dr. Levle?
I'd just like to thank everybody again for all the teachers and parents and students that we got started back. The worst time it's been with the amount of cases, the amount of deaths and everything. And our numbers are holding steady and even going down. So everybody's doing their part to kind of fight this disease and keep our schools going. I noticed in the report that we've got a lot of failures in the schools, but that's understandable with what we've been going through. And this is something we're gonna have to work with for several years down the road to help everybody kind of even out and level out the playing field for all our students. But I'm just proud of all our staff and our community for dealing with the pandemic the way they are.
Ms. Poplin?
I wanna start by thanking the school counselors, the bus drivers, the cafeteria staff, the media specialists for getting the Read Aloud Day done virtually. And I want to congratulate the STEM educator that was recognized tonight. We appreciate the work that you guys have done and you stepped up. And it seems like all of our additional staff is excelling with that as well. I also wanted to say that I've been following some of neighboring schools' decisions here lately online in neighboring counties about going back, not going back. And there have been a lot of heated comments from parents, family members. And I want to commend administration here for getting as many students back as we can. With that said, we had students start back this week, and I know that teachers are working extremely hard to, and administrators too, bus drivers, new bus routes, new kids, rearranging rooms. I guess with COVID, we have learned to adapt and adjust, and I know that our staff will do that, and they will excel at doing that. And I just want them to know that I personally thank them for taking on the students because I have friends and family members with children that desperately wanted their kids back in school. And I just feel like we're making the right decision, getting as many students back in the building as we can.
Thank you, Ms. Poplin. Gonna take a bit of privilege of the chair this evening, and I concur with everything said this evening by all the board members. We've had a lot of, of difficult news. We've had some good news, and I'd like to make a little recognition for some other good things happening here. We have two of our Oakboro STEM students, Noah Waits and Lucas Mallos, who have actually done an extremely good job and have made the finalist of the Regional Science Fair next weekend. And anytime I think we can recognize students specifically for accomplishments, obviously the district as a whole as well, be able to take the opportunity to do that. I'm sure there may be other students as well. I'm not certain. These are just two that I'm aware of, being from my area. So we congratulate them as well. Now, our next board meeting will be Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021, in the meeting room here at seven o'clock. And I will need to entertain a motion to go back into closed session for a brief period of time for personnel matters based on the appropriate North Carolina General Statute.
Mr. Chance, I just, I'm sorry. One thing I did forget, it is also CTE Month, and I did not wanna leave them out. I had it, I had it marked down, but I didn't have it on my final draft because career technical education is, is really big, you know, here in Stanley County. And obviously, our CT director being nominated for, you know, such a prestigious, you know, with her accomplishments. I just wanted to make sure I said that. And I, I don't mean to drag this on any longer, but as far as Ms. Poplin brought up a really good point. And we also have to thank the board for helping us to keep the kids in school. Because like if you've seen on TV, there are some divided boards and there's some divided central offices and things like that. But the fact that we're all working together in unison has really made us an effective team. So I wanna thank the board as well.
We're certainly way ahead of the game, in my opinion. The governor doesn't have anything on us. I'll entertain a motion to go back into closed session for personnel matters. Motion by Mr. Graves. Second, Ms. Watson, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.